Twenty-eighth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeen through twenty-three as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Mark Peterson, Mayor of the City of Winona, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth through the twenty-third, 2015, to be Constitution Week in Winona, Minnesota, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen-eighty-seven. I also want to recognize a letter that was left here by quite a long number of citizens relative to action that we took at our last council meeting about adding stop signs at Second and Johnson Streets. Apparently, this list of people like the idea. And also, I just want to kind of just say a big thank you to some city staff that were involved in a couple of celebrations recently. Saturday night out at the airport, we had a wonderful lighting ceremony, historic lighting ceremony, I might add, where George Bullen, our manager out there, put everything pitch dark and then brought the lights up slowly as they were from nineteen fifty-one up to the present. And it was really a fun evening, free root beer floats. I also want to thank the staff. I know they worked hard at the public library a couple of weeks ago and put on a really fun event there that celebrated the history of our library, the friends of the library. We're very active in that, but it was, again, a very nice event and well attended, and I think, I can speak that, I think everybody that was there that night left with some additional pride of our public library building. Also, just a really quick update here. We've talked in the past about the Amtrak station and the de-staffing of the Amtrak station. A little update on that is that I did hear from, I have been in contact with both Senators Frank and Klobuchar and Congressman Walz's office, and I found out today, they are working on a joint letter that will be sent to Amtrak, and I know that also that our congressman will be calling the President or the head of the Amtrak company and talking to him more specifically about our concerns. So it's not over. We're continuing to work on it. It won't be easy, but we haven't given up and will continue to try to do that. When this letter goes out from our congressional delegation, we will try to match that with local letters from Winona and probably from Rochester as well at the same time. So hopefully, we can get them to change their mind. And at the last meeting, we were asked for an update on the Levy Park, and I've asked Chad Hubel to provide that update, as well as an update on the Masonic Temple. There have been some more recent developments there as well.
Mayor and Council, I'll start with the Levy Park update. Anytime we discuss updates on Levy Park, I always like to refer back to the committee's recommendations that were brought forward in 2015, and so I'll start there. One of the recommendations that they brought forward was to repair the patio area at the, I guess, the western edge of the park or the foot of Main Street. Of course, we've completed the patio repair. We added the seating for the grass area, the sod, and the additional concrete walkways around that area. This has certainly proven to be less labor-intensive for maintenance, and again, I think we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on that area. The committee also suggested that we provide electrical upgrades in Levy Park. Those have been completed as it relates to the current situation at the patio. Certainly, we may had to add some additional electrical if we continue down the path of performance area or structure in that facility. But we did add new electrical upgrades at the patio area to accommodate events such as Live at the Levy or other events that we do, so we've upgraded that electrical, as well as adding electrical to the docking facility at the east end of the park. Third recommendation was to enhance the crossing of the railroad tracks at Main Street. The best update I can give you is that this is a work in progress. We spent the last nine months negotiating with Union Pacific for the right to enter into a permitting process for the crossing. We do have a verbal commitment from UP to move forward with the crossing at Main Street, which means we would enter into most likely a license agreement with the railroad for that crossing. The UP, however, has not provided a written statement to proceed. They are researching the impact that the crossing may have to the Canadian Pacific. So in other words, the UP does have an agreement with the Canadian Pacific Railroad in the same area, and they want to make sure they're not violating that agreement with the Canadian Pacific Railroad. So once we receive written notice, we'll proceed with design work for that area. The committee recommended to council, and it was approved, that fifteen thousand dollars be spent for that design of Main Street and the crossing. However, I don't think it's appropriate for us to spend those dollars until we're in that formal permitting process. In other words, until we get really written approval from the UP to proceed. We are, however, moving forward with the survey work in that area to have a legal description ready in the event that we are in that permitting process so it doesn't cause any more delays. Fourth recommendation by the committee was to put seating, removable seating, in the patio and parts throughout Levy Park. There was a delay in this process, however, I believe it was a positive delay, mainly because of the efforts of Main Street and the street scape designs you saw at the last pre-council. We did take their recommendations, waited for their recommendations, took the recommendations that they had about type, style, color, and we have ordered those. We are hopeful that those will be in this week. We do still have work that is set to be completed this fall, which includes some improved walkways as part of our sidewalk replacement project, and as well as planning more events in Levy Park. The last recommendation that's left unfinished is the signage, and I think this could be done two ways. One is to coordinate that again with Main Street and the bridge project to have signage leading to Levy Park, or we could go into a design phase and place that new signage based on the Main Street crossing or the upgrade to Main Street. The committee discussed an entry-style sign, maybe at the foot of Main Street as one proposal. I think that maybe waiting a little bit might be a good idea as it relates to crossing, or I know at the last pre-council, we talked about the possibility of developing a new city symbol. I don't think we want to get into then having some signs if that's a process we're going to proceed with. So that's the update on Levy Park unless anyone has any further questions.
That sounds great. I appreciate your update. I just have a small question. You said that the seating and the new patio furniture would be in this week. Does that mean it will be on the patio?
Well, I can't guarantee that. It comes unassembled, and so it'll depend on really just how fast maintenance can assemble and place them. But as we assemble them, we'll place them. We won't wait for the, we ordered eight tables, and so we won't wait. We'll put them up one by one if we need to, just to, again, get that idea and concept out that we have the seating available.
And those are made right here in Winona?
Those are made right here in Winona by Enova.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, how about the Masonic?
Masonic, I handed out a packet for you at the start of the meeting. I'm going to just refer to it. The update, more for a visual look at the Masonic Temple, because it can get confusing, I think, when I start talking about trusses, beams, et cetera. Just to recap, of course, the Masonic Temple had a Historic Structures Report, otherwise known as an HSR, completed, and that HSR was finalized in December of 2014. So we had some work done prior, but it was finalized in December of 2014, and in that HSR, it suggested we conduct further structural analysis of the following items, really as a priority for 2015. And that first item was the roof membrane. We needed to do another review and look at repair. So in your documents that I handed out, if you look in the lower right-hand corner of the A-170 sheet, gives you the detail of the roof repair and suggestions for that repair. I will note that what I handed out tonight are what's called eighty percent construction documents. It means that these are not final. This is really just a progress report as we move to the final documents. But any of the estimates I give you tonight are final by the Architecture Structural Engineer. This A-170 sheet is just to illustrate that work included in the roof project would be the roof decking material, the membrane, insulation, removal of asbestos, some parapet work, some flashing work, and some cornice work. It wouldn't be the entire exterior of the building in any of those three. It would be directly related to the roof project and really where the roof meets those parapits, cornice, and flashing. So the roof did have further structural analysis. The membrane was placed in a fair-to-poor condition. It would require replacement in three to five years. So they found no work that would extend the life past typical sealing and patching. So Miller Dunwoodie is suggesting that we conduct a full replacement. Keep in mind, three-to-five-year timeframe is not something I would recommend based on our previous delays, and then, of course, the condition of the drops. And so when I say "condition of the drops," the drops are currently being stored at the Masonic Temple. They eventually will have to be either restored or taken back out of their storage, because when we took them down and rolled them up, really the lifespan of rolling them up and storing them is about five years. And so again, when you correlate the roof project to the drops, I would recommend that we do this sooner. You'll hear that here in a minute. The estimated cost to do the roof project is $288,000. If you continue in the document to A-153, this is where I think you get a good illustration of what's happening as it relates to the roof trusses. So A-153, you should see an image of the second floor of the Masonic Temple. This is really, if you were looking from the third floor into the second floor. On the very left-hand side, you see the stage house, and there is a truss on the very left or the west side of the building, and there are four arrows pointing to the roof trusses that are in the auditorium. These are the support trusses that are showing deflection as noted in the HSR, those four in the auditorium. All four will require repair and reinforcement. Repair includes removal of the plaster from the interior. So in this case, you work inside the building, you're on the auditorium floor, you go up to the trusses, you remove the plaster, very similar to this structure, you remove the plaster and fix the roof trusses from the interior. This work should be completed in conjunction with the roof replacement. When the work is done on those trusses, obviously, we need to match the historic paint and stenciling that is on those, really the plaster work on those roof trusses. The estimated cost to do those four is tied to the next item, which is actually the steel, the stage house steel truss. Again, very westerly side of the building, you see the arrow pointing to the stage house. This needs removal of loading to the truss from the roof. So once the load is removed from this truss, it's in adequate condition. However, once a decision is made on the entire rigging system for the drops, this truss may need some more structural work. However, removing the load should be completed in conjunction with the roof replacement. In the analysis, it's noted that the rigging beam, which is not shown on this document, will need to be replaced, but it does not need to occur prior to the roof work. However, that replacement of that rigging beam needs to be done before any rigging work is completed. The estimated cost to repair these five trusses is $125,000. The total roof project based on the scope I provided above is $413,000 without any contingency Architect is suggesting that we go out for bid in winter with a project start date of early spring of 2016. It should be noted that our pre-application to the MHS was denied, so staff would bring forward the scope of work, the specs, completed 100 percent drawings for bid, as well as a funding source for the project. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, thank you for the information.
Mayor, do you have a question?
Oh, Al, did you have a?
Chad, I was curious as to the existing roof structure and any guarantees that were offered by the contractor that did the initial roof structure. Are there any, and is it worth pursuing?
When was that roof done?
You mean like a warranty on the existing roof membrane?
Right.
The warranty is up. It's been past the 20-year warranty period.
I thought it was more recent than that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, Chad. Just one other thing, I want to, I'd like to move up five, one, two, three, and four after our required public hearing having to do with employee health insurance. We have some guests here that have to drive back to the Twin Cities, or a guest, I guess. All right, City Manager?
Mayor and Council, I have for you tonight a letter informing you that I'm resigning my position as City Manager, and that I plan to retire from the city on February nineteenth, 2016.
We'll let that absorb for a moment here.
The group is silent.
Yeah. I'm not going to act, pretend I'm shocked, because Judy discussed this with me, and so I've known this, but nevertheless, it's, it does come, still, to hear you say it does come as a shock, and I'm sure saying it wasn't easy. We have an employee here that has done an outstanding job for thirty-two years as Economic Development Director, and for the last almost four years now, I think, as our City Manager, and those are going to be big shoes to fill. What I, I know this is going to take a while to do, and I think that, I think I would like to recommend that the council consider seriously a motion tonight to, to go forward with requests for proposals from firms that deal with executive hiring so that we can get this process going. I think it's probably, in my opinion, again, I think it's the best way to make sure that we get a good result. I think it would involve the council in the process, which I think is very important. But once we get going on this, it's going to take, it's going to take a while, and once we do hire somebody, that person could end up having to give a two-month notice or even a three-month notice to relocate. So Judy's given us a February nineteenth date. I guess that's a date we would like to try to shoot for to get a new City Manager in place. But I do want to thank you for your service and for your difficult decision here, because I can respect that. It won't be easy, but thank you.
Merk?
Yes?
I would make that motion now unless the attorney says we have to wait for new business.
You have to take roll call yet, haven't you?
No.
Oh, we haven't.
Oh, my gosh.
We need to do that.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry.
Let's take roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Councilman Thurlie?
Here.
Craig?
Here.
Alexander?
Here.
Idan?
Here.
Borzakowski?
Here.
Double.
Here.
Well, then I'd make a motion that we go out for bids from companies that specialize in governmental hirings, and...
Second. Motion by Michelle, and second by Jerry. Further discussion?
I would just say I'm a little terrified about trying to find someone to fulfill your role here, Judy, but thank you for giving us enough time to try to accomplish that. I appreciate that very much.
I guess I should read the letter. I hadn't even read the letter yet. I think I know what it says. Other comments before we vote? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor, the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Poll the same sign. All right, thank you.
And next, we'll move on to our public hearing. Item 2.1 is a public hearing to consider the resolution to levy assessments for unpaid charges, and Mary distributed an updated assessment rule that has payments through today, and this is a public hearing.
Okay. I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anybody here that wishes to speak. Anybody here wish to speak to these charges? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and thank you.
My name is Allison Bear. I live at 521 Wall Street. I am a new homeowner, and I've yet to receive a water bill. It looks like one of the addresses might have belonged, so I guess I just do not wish to penalize that.
Okay. By showing up here tonight, you've extended that opportunity, so...
Mayor and Council, so Ms. Barr then would not get, would not, would have a week before the fifteen percent penalty would go on.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else here to speak to this issue last time? Anybody here wish to speak? Hearing that, we declare the public hearing closed.
I'd make a motion to adopt the attached resolution and levy the special assessments.
Second. Motion by Michelle, second by Paul. Any further discussion, George?
Yeah, just one question with Ms. Bear or Bear. You said you have not received a water bill yet?
Councilmember Borzakowski, apparently it was going to Sparta, and we looked, and the bill, ever since the account was set up back August of 2013, had been going to Sparta, Wisconsin, and there had been two payments that were made in 2013, and I guess we never were informed that there was a problem until tonight, so...
Now, you owned a home? Okay.
How long have you lived there?
A few years.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Al?
Just a comment. You know, I look at these lists all the time, and, you know, I guess with individuals, I understand circumstances prevent some of them from, you know, paying the unpaid charges, and I do realize that we, as a community, receive those funds at some point in the future. But, you know, every time I look at this list, I go, there seems to be people who may or may not be landlords who own multiple properties, and, you know, I see the same names on multiple properties, and I'm just wondering, you know, we deny rental certificates, or, no, not rental certificates, but at least liquor licenses to those who have not paid their municipal obligations. And I'm wondering if maybe staff might want to review that and look for a way that we can, as a community, say, well, individuals understand circumstances, but if you're a multiple-property-holding landlord, you really should pay those fees that are owed to the city before you're allowed to continue in your business of renting property. And, you know, and that's my suggestion to staff. Maybe there's a policy that we can adopt that will allow us to recover those expenses and not let landlords use the city as a bank. That's my comment.
Okay. Jerry, you have something?
Yeah, it's not a comment, it's more of a question. So this gets on to the taxes, but it's spread out over how long a period of time? Is it one year?
Mayor and Council, it's spread out over ten years, but there, you can see that there's a fifteen percent charge, and then there is another ten percent charge, and so it is, it is, you know, it's an interest rate that probably isn't a...
It's a stiff interest rate, so...
So it's a, so, but it is spread over ten years.
So if a person's name comes on here and wants, we vote to have it go on the tax rolls, and the penalty is, let's say, a hundred dollars that's on this sheet, and it's going to be spread out over all those years, is that a one-time charge of a hundred dollars, or is that going to be additional percentage annually?
Excuse me, it's one year for utilities. Excuse me. Yes, well, there's that or ten years, but this one is one year for utilities.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. So if they don't pay their water bill and it gets on here, they...
Fifteen percent, and then the ten percent, and it's a one-year for utilities.
And it's tacked out of their, they pay it off in a year, or it just gets worse?
We have like ninety-nine point nine percent collection for all of our assessments, so it gets, it does get paid.
I think I answered that wrong for myself. So you're saying it's a one-time deal if it's a hundred-dollar penalty? That's one time for a hundred dollars, but the payment of, let's say, five hundred dollars is spread out over a number of years?
A year. One year. Everything for utilities is one year. I misspoke. It's the, this one is not spread over ten years. We have some other assessments spread over ten years. Utilities is paid in one year.
Gotcha.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I do have another comment, and this is, this is, I know we talk about the, the monthly billing and the monthly reading, and I know it's very expensive for us to do it, but I heard today, one of the reasons that the person got behind is because they can handle monthly billing and not a quarterly billing, and now they've dug themselves into a heck of a hole. So it's one more reason for us to maybe consider. Yes, I know we talked about how expensive it would be, possibly another staff member, another computer. It's very expensive, but when we tack on the discomfort of having quarterly billings, this is yet another one, that it sneaks up on them, can't do it, let another one go, another one go, and all of a sudden, it's a big chunk that's going to be in one year. So I'm talking about the individuals that have a hard time meeting, not the ones that have done it twelve on here.
I thought the expense would be for the individual homeowner, because it would be astronomical in cost. When we looked at it, we had Mary just last year pull it out and show us what it would cost to switch over, and it was going to be so expensive for the homeowner.
It'd be expensive, and it'd be expensive wherever we, wherever we borrow the cost, and I just thought I'd throw it out there, because it does, we seem like we discuss it a couple of times a year, and this is yet another thing. But I don't want to spend too much time on that. That's just one, looking at it from yet a different angle. But you answered my question, Mary. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I just, Paul? And while it may help offset doing something like that is the idea that if people had the opportunity that if they wanted to pay the entire year, that they could pay that too instead of having to mail out quarterly.
The, the water is based on usage, and so the, so we would have to bill based on usage. It's not a fixed, it's not a fixed amount per quarter.
Okay, and the reason I'm saying that is that there were some of them that were just paying the stormwater tax.
There are a few, few, there are some rate that are just paying the storm sewer charge.
Which is a fixed amount.
Yes, that would be a fixed amount, right.
And so that might be an opportunity to...
Yeah, we either have to do monthly, quarter, we never, everything has to be on the same, on the same schedule, because we already had looked at, into that, but everything needs to be on the same, same schedule.
George?
I know we don't want to do it, but I know years ago, that I remember, your water bill wasn't paid, the water was shut off. I mean, that was done years ago, and if they break the stop box, whatever, more than likely needs repair anyway, so I'd like to look at that avenue as well, so...
Okay, any other comments? Al?
Just, you know, I agree with my colleague, Councilman Craig, about monthly billing, and I'm just wondering if there's any other kinds of partnerships out there that provide monthly billing to homes in the community in similar fashion that the city might look into in partnering with other organizations that also do monthly billing to individual homes, but it's just a thought anyway.
Yeah, probably not, Al.
Well, a thought.
Yeah, thank, yeah, thank you. Yeah, we've, we have in the past gone with some other governmental units, and, and then there's like a pecking order of if the computer gets behind, where do you stand, and, and it actually has not saved us money in the past. We, we have been the most efficient when we have been able to handle our own computer system, our own time schedule, and our own financial checks and balances.
Well, a lot of my concern, too, is the excess water usage where it's not discovered until that third, fourth, or fifth quarterly bill, and then we're, you know, we're sitting here talking about a very large water bill. So, I mean, anything we can do to allow monthly billing would be, would be worth looking into.
We, excuse me, we do, we do monitor the quarterly bills. If there's high water usage, the water department is, does contact the property owner or the person living in the house, and, and then if they don't do anything about it, I guess that's their prerogative, but, you know, whatever, leaky, leaky toilets, leaky sinks, whatever, whatever it is, but it does not, it, those are done at a quarterly basis. It's not, you know, after two or three quarters, so.
Yeah, I, I realize that, and I appreciate the fact the water department does that, because it's alerted homeowners to these kinds of leaky toilet issues.
And, and some businesses as well, it's not just the homeowners.
And businesses as well, yeah, you're right.
Michelle, you had something?
I'm just going to say, part of being a homeowner is you have to check your own pipes and plumbing. You can't depend on the city or the billing to do it, and I just don't see how making the bill so expensive for everyone by doing monthly billing is going to help the people who have a broken toilet that they don't get fixed. And yes, they're, the bill that they find out will be shorter, but that's still assuming a lot, and I had the city in my office today telling me that we had a leaky toilet. I went over to the house, and guys are like, oh, yeah, that's been like that for three months. They pay the water bill, and they just don't care. So, my, I guess my point is, it doesn't matter what you do, they knew it was leaking, and they just, it was a floppy, it, it's seven-dollar part, and it would have been one phone call and it would have been fixed. And so, I just stand by this. If you're going to be a property owner or homeowner, you've got to check your toilets, your sinks, your water heaters, and make sure they're not leaking. That's just part of owning property. That's where I fall on that. I don't think anything we do can change that up here.
Anything else? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Kerry's.
Under new business, item five point one, is the two thousand sixteen City Health Insurance Committee recommendation on health plan designs and rates.
Mayor and city council, tonight is our annual review for our health insurance plan for two thousand sixteen, and we do have a few recommendations, and I would like to introduce a representative that will go over the review, and it's Joe Harton with Mercer. Here's Joe.
Mayor and council, Joe Harton from Mercer. As we discussed earlier tonight in pre-council, and as I mentioned to you, as we've reviewed with the insurance committee in meetings in May and August, we've had a bit of an uptick in claims, as we've, as, as I believe we've warned you about in, in past years, we've had a, a good run of, of claims on the medical plan below average and below budget. This year, it appears we're, we're moving a little higher, due largely to several large claims that we've had at above-average number. Our initial recommendation from a rate perspective was a fourteen point eight percent increase in costs. We did make two recommendations and discuss them and got buy-off on those recommendations through the insurance committee, one of which was to reduce or limit the amount of travel-related transplant assistance to ten thousand dollars per lifetime, and another was to change the terms of our stop-loss contract, not the amount, which will remain at a hundred thousand dollars, but to change to a hundred thousand dollars on a per-individual basis. And with that, our recommended cost increase for the overall insurance plan, with the same plans, the same designs, it would be at a thirteen point nine percent increase.
Okay, thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the City Health Insurance Committee's recommendations for two thousand sixteen.
I second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion, as we discuss this in pre-council. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Kerry's.
Item five point two is the two thousand sixteen rates for the employee life insurance, long-term disability insurance, flex spending, and health reimbursement account administration.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Michelle. Discussion?
There's no changes, apparently, from one year to the next. So, that's good. Okay, noted. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Kerry's.
Item five point three is the health insurance program funding.
I would move to approve to provide an additional one hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Right, second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion?
This, this resolution, just so the mayor and council understand, also includes if there is a shortfall in two thousand fifteen, that we fund that from a favorable fund balance at the end of the year.
And that would, that would be paid first, and then it would be divvied up in the other equipment and facilities.
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay, we all understand that. All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Kerry's.
And item five point four is a healthy, healthy balance program.
I would move the, to direct the mayor and the city clerk to sign the attached contract.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Kerry's.
And we will go back to the petitions, requests, and communications. Item three point one is a request to close Liberty Street by the Polish Museum and Cultural Institute for their festival on October fourth. I move to approve that. I'm sorry, George, you do it.
No, no.
No, no, it's your board. You do it. Wait, is it? It's just your people.
Somebody do it. I think I heard Michelle made-
Okay, fine, I made the wish.
I would second that.
Okay.
All right. Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Item three point two is the Maury Miller five K request on Saturday, October third. I move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Kerry's.
Item three point three is a request by Compass Church to close a portion of Main Street and the adjacent parking lot on Saturday, October thirty-first.
I'd move to approve that request.
Second.
Again, with Michelle and George. Any questions?
It's a hive brain. We're linked.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Kerry's.
Item five point four is a license agreement request from Latch Building LLC for encroachment into right-of-way on Second Street for a handicap ramp at one twenty East Second.
Move to approve that request.
I second that.
Motion by Michelle, this time seconded by Pam. Any questions? I guess I have one question. Handicaps width is, I think, four feet, and this is five feet. Is there a reason why it's wider than the code?
Uh, railing and curb along their, their handicap ramp.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
There's a railing and a curb along their handicap ramp, so that shrinks it. They actually got about four and a half for that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Kerry's.
Item three point five is a banner over Mankato Avenue for the color dash five K. The banner would be installed October fifth through the twelfth.
Move to approve that request.
I second that.
Motion by George, and I think I heard Pam seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Kerry's.
Item three point six, a request for one-hour parking on Franklin Street at Sarnia. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any questions or comments?
I do have a question.
Okay.
I, I am interested by, in this, just because I'd like to know what is the precedent for parking for a business in, in a residential area? We have a lot of them around town, but is there any, is there any description of, it's a residential zone, this is a business in a residential area, how is it decided which businesses are allowed parking? Is there-
Who can answer that, I guess?
Um, did they get a variance to do a business there, or is it retail?
I do not know that. That's why, that's partly why I'm asking, because it's-
Yeah, I'm not sure either. I, I thought it was retail, maybe I. As far as businesses and residential, there, there's a fair amount from around town that have restricted parking. You guys decide whether they get, sign or not.
Okay.
Well, in this case, there really is no, there isn't much residential there. It's, other than the person that owns the property that is requesting this.
Right, and then the parking buildings on the other side of the street. Basically, there's a fair amount of students that are parking there in order not to park the residential lots. They're visitors or public deals. There's a lot of that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so I'm hearing that it's at the discretion of council, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Al?
Well, just a comment. I mean, this is on the west side of the street, and it's Monday through Saturday, so, you know, activities at the park that happen over the weekend probably wouldn't really have much of an impact on those. I don't think it makes a lot of sense, and I support the motion.
Yeah, I do, too. Any other comments? Not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Kerry's.
Item three point seven is a request to revoke the no parking on Franklin Street on the north side of Sarnia.
I move to approve that request.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Pam?
Yes, I, I would like to make an amendment to this, to this motion. I noticed that we are removing a no parking area on either side of some driveways that are rather heavily trafficked. So, these are places where, where people can, are coming out of that Winona State University housing unit and onto, onto Franklin, and also across the street, that's the Family and Children's Center. I would like to see if we would adjust that, that revocation of the no parking area, so there's a little bit more of a sightline, so that people who are coming out on Franklin can have more of a chance to see who's there already. If you revoke all of the no parking areas right up to the, right up to the driveway, we're going to have, you know, a very different situation, I think, for people who are coming into traffic from those driveways. So, I've got it, I've got it drawn out here in, with my pink magic marker, but I, I think it would be safer for people to, for us to revoke the no parking just from like halfway, like leave two or three parking places on either side of those driveways, given the number of people in that Winona State lot that are often in a sociable hurry, coming and going.
So, how far is that many from the driveway?
Two, two lot, or two parking spaces.
That's forty feet muscle to do the no parking at that point.
Brian, could you come to the microphone, please?
I, I don't think it's forty feet. I can see the size of the cars on here, and it would not, it would not be-
Uh, standard parking stalls, twenty feet, so two would be forty. So, if we took off two stalls, it'd be forty feet.
How many, how many parking spaces are you creating here, do you know?
I haven't counted. I'm not sure. We'd maybe have three on each side if that's the case.
I think this is, I really do think this is creating a problem, because I know how fast those, those residents are going and how, how, how they come into and out of traffic. So, I don't know how much our twenty or forty feet are, but, but if you look at the length of these cars here on your, on your aerial, you'll see that there's, I guess it's one set of, well, the, anyway, I'd like to make an amendment that we take into account the, the entry and the exit from these two driveways.
Okay, um, can I just amend the distances?
Well, hearing the, hearing the, the questioning here, maybe we could just recommend that, you know, you come back to, we put this on the agenda in the future, you come back with more specifics about how many parking spaces there are here, and the comments from Councilwoman and what that impact might be. I don't think there's a necessary rush here to provide this or do this tonight, Michelle.
Maybe it can be something as simple as striping the areas by the parking lot, so they can't park right up next to the, the driveways there.
Right, yeah, and the way that street is laid out, it'd be just as simple just to start it to the south of those driveways.
Right, but it doesn't look like there's a bunch of room on the other sides of, by the driveways, anyway.
The only reason I wrote it that way is that's the way the ordinance was, and it was, you know, easy to eliminate it.
George?
I just move we table this till next meeting or so and bring something back.
Keep more information, certainly, certainly.
I'll second that.
You and Councilwoman Aiden can get together and take a look at that, so.
Okay. Well, we have a vote. Do we, on tape?
To table.
To table, and say we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Okay.
And under unfinished business, item four point one is digester repairs for the wastewater treatment plant. I would point out, we distributed an updated resolution, and I do have one more correction, and it should be in the first paragraph that the mayor and city clerk will execute the contract.
What, what does it say now?
Says city manager and clerk.
Oh. I would move the recommendation as amended.
Second.
Are we ordering the mayor to do it?
Yes, I order you to sign that thing and fix that digester, or we'll have a bigger problem than anyone in the city wants to deal with.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second by Paul and Michelle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Oh, Al, I'm sorry.
I, I do, I haven't had a chance to literally digest these amendments.
You don't want to digest.
I'm sorry. Bad point. Um... So, this is something that we're taking money from change to the final disinfectant of the, of the treatment plant, and we're moving those funds into this digester cover repair. And obviously, the question is, you know, can we, can we do that and wait till next year to, to make changes to the final disinfection, and would we run afoul of regulatory agencies if we don't do the final disinfection now or have to wait, you know, later?
I know I can't do as many points as I'll just- The effluent right now is being treated with chlorination.
Right.
The system now works. They're just going to upgrade the chlorination system. They were looking into a UV, and with the river levels with the head, it did not work. Plus, there's a lot of cloudy water coming out that the UV may not work in Winona, like with the candy factories and stuff like that. You might not get the UV to penetrate to kill the bacteria, so it's going to go with the chlorine system again. It's just an upgrade. We are in compliance right now.
Okay, I mean, it, it's one of those things where, you know, it's better to wait, because who knows, there might be better ways to do what you're trying to do, given what was initially proposed.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's possibly true. The main reason, though, that this got moved up is this was more of a diary. That's why it got shuffled.
And, and for those that are interested in the chlorination, once it's put in, is removed before that effluent hits, hits the Mississippi River, so it's not, you know, going into the Mississippi. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Passes.
And now we will go to new business, item five point five. It's the plant review for the Swenson second subdivision.
I'd move to approve the attached resolution.
That's second. Motion by Michelle, and, give it to Al. He hasn't had a second, I don't think. Discussion? There isn't any, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Kerry's.
Item five point six is the flood control gap analysis.
I'd move to approve the attached resolution.
I second that. I second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion? George?
And what are we doing here?
In a nutshell, we are analyzing the data that we have right now, collecting it, and then when we bid for the certification of the levy, each and every consultant will be comparing apples to apples and bidding on a defined certification process, rather than just kind of hoping we have something, then we get hit with a change order later. We should get more consistent, up-to-speed bids with this process. So it's basically a data collection, finding out what we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Any other questions? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.7, mayor and council salaries.
Move to introduce the attached ordinance. I'll second that. Motion by Jerry, seconded by Al. Discussion? George?
Yeah, just simply put on this is that this would go into effect after the next council election, and more or less, it's going to benefit the future council representatives that will be sitting here in the future. You know, some here at this table may benefit from it, but it's, the people that are yet to come will be the main beneficiaries of this increase.
And there was information provided, I think to all of us, in comparison of salaries for many regional cities, and I guess this salary increase would be in line with where other cities are, and so...
Actually, by the time it comes into play, it'll still, we'll be behind, but it gets us closer to the other cities. But this won't take effect until the beginning of 2017, and the numbers that we were given were real numbers as of today. So it gets us closer, but it'll still, we'll still be behind cities of similar size.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Carrie's.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with Michelle.
Excellent, because I have to go to choir. I was asked by the chamber to mention that the Harlem ambassadors are going to be battling out with the Sugarloafers, and I believe that some of our local celebrities are in it, like Mark, are you tipping the ball off?
I don't know what I'm doing. They won't tell me, but I'll be there doing something.
You're doing something. Jerome Christensen, I think, is going to be our center, I don't know. Patrick Merrick is maybe...
Jerome is the center?
That's what I heard. Patrick Merrick is maybe a referee, Jean Plouski, Jeremy Miller, Kevin Kearney, I think one of our firemen. Anyway, the Goodview city manager is going to play. It should be fun, but the tickets are for sale. It's for Saturday, October 3rd at 7:00 PM. You can call the chamber for more information. Otherwise, I believe tickets are on sale at Midtown Foods and Hy-Vee and a variety of other local establishments.
Thank you. Jerry?
I attended the funeral today of Bob Norton, a long-term city employee. So he was, just wanted to recognize that. Bob was also very proud of the fact that he was part of General Patton's army, and he was also somewhat involved in the Nuremberg Trials. So he was one of the guards, I believe, but still interesting stories to tell. So he was a wonderful father, and an uncle, and a grandfather, et cetera, et cetera. So just, the funeral was today.
Al?
And again, I piggyback with Jerry's condolences for the funeral of Bob Norton. You know, my dad was a city employee, he worked with Bob, and it's appropriate that we recognize his service to the community as well as to his country.
Yeah. By the way, he was also my uncle, so he didn't want to mention that publicly, but God was...
I didn't mean anything negative to columnist for the Daily News, Jerome Christensen, about councilperson Alexander's comments on the basketball, but having Jerome as a center is going to be a real challenge for that team.
I think it's comedy ball, you know?
Yeah, well, it'll be fun.
Nobody expects us to win.
I did a donkey basketball game once, and my shoulder is still hurting from falling off the donkey when the donkey stopped and I didn't. So, yeah, it was a long time ago. Well, I guess I have to extend my, and I put this in quotes, "thanks" to the three bike riders who chose to ride three abreast on West Lake Boulevard on the 15th at about 7:00 at night. They made traffic really difficult. Riding three abreast, they blocked an entire lane, and it made traffic difficult in both directions. So I've made comments on bicycle riders in the past. I've been taken to task, because people who are bike riders are saying that, well, no, they don't do that. Well, they do. And I just wish that those people who ride bicycles, and there's nothing wrong with that, and there's nothing wrong with our streets, and we have wonderful bike lanes and stuff, and we ask that everybody share the lane for both vehicles and for cyclists, because these people were definitely cycling in their own lane, and I'm glad they had a good time, and when I passed them, there was a vehicle coming in the opposite lane when I tried to pass in the opposite lane, but we, you know, luckily, it was West Lake Boulevard, so there wasn't any conflict, but just a word to the wise, anyway. And I do want to express my sincere thanks to an anonymous First Ward resident. They decided that with the recent concern nationally on law enforcement and the attitude some in the public have toward law enforcement, they wanted to express their view, and the constituent contacted me, and we made arrangements through a local company to deliver the largest marble frosted cake that the particular entity made with white frosting and a big blue letters that said, "Thank you." And I understand it was delivered the week of Labor Day to the law enforcement center, to our local police department. And the response I got from our chief, Chief Ostrack, was that it was very well-appreciated, very well-enjoyed, and they had cake left over, which was only appropriate. So just wanted to pass that along. I appreciate the constituent for doing that. They wish to remain anonymous, but I did want to recognize that contribution to some of our city employees. I also want to thank Winona State. Apparently, the university has decided to look at establishing a baseball field for their program on the campus of Southeastern Technical, and they're going through the process of doing that. And I drove by the old rugby pitch the other day, and it seems to be an appropriate place for that, so I thank the university for their efforts in continuing to do their work to allow this to happen. And, you know, I guess I share some sadness right now, because I am kind of sad to hear about Ms. Bowdway's decision to retire as our Winona State manager, and maybe there are others that do that as well, because Winona really is a much better community because of her professionalism and her passionate involvement over many years, from the management of our community development department to coordinating that boat lift when the bridge between Winona and Wisconsin was closed because of structural issues. Judy has spent literally countless hours and made the successful effort to make certain we were all safe and healthy. And this is for someone from Duluth. But seriously, I shall miss her advice to the city council, and I do wish Judy the absolute nothing but the best in retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul?
I would just like to thank all of the people who volunteered for the Dakota Gathering a week, a couple of weeks ago, and I think it went off well, the weather was beautiful. And also to encourage any residents who happen to have dash cams, piggybacking on what Al said, and has good pictures of careless bicycle and driving habits, to share those with our police and the council, so that we can see that there is great room for improvement by many, without having to spend an enormous amount of money on redoing and narrowing Broadway.
Pam?
Yes, I just wanted to say to the people who have contacted me regarding the Maplewood Townhomes' traffic situation, that the city and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority and the Maplewood staff is indeed looking at traffic safety improvements in that area. Second, I have an invitation. If you are interested in helping the Healthy Lake Winona Group survey Lake Winona and Lake Park for invasive species, there's an outing that's being planned for October 1st, Thursday night, 5:00 PM. And if you're interested in that, just contact me. It's kind of fun to go out there and see what really is around the lake, and this is just a census, this is not actually pulling weeds or doing anything about it. So thank you.
Thanks, George.
Okay, thank you. Brian, right after the meeting, I just see you for one minute before you take off. The Hamilton Railroad Crossing, one of the lanes, I believe, on the south side of the median, just take a drive-by, you'll see what we're talking about. It is in need of some repair, if not major repair, perhaps, some patching right now to make it a lot more safer crossing as cars go over that. And also, the trains blocking Mankato Avenue still are happening. I don't think at the large measure that it was, but I believe that they still are happening down there. And also, I'd like to wish a speedy recovery to Jerry Cordis. He's been ill for the last six weeks, and wish him a speedy recovery. And also condolences to the Norton family. So I went to school with two of his daughters, and he was a good man.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are four items. The approval of the minutes from September 8th, the final adoption of an ordinance for no-parking at 965 East Mark, an ordinance for no-parking at Fourth and Huff Street, and an ordinance to approve the 2016 fees. I would also note, we would like to adopt the summary ordinance for publication of those fees.
Move to approve those consent items?
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To adjourn.
This is for you. They ran out before I could just read. They don't consider...
Are me?
In the...
In my spare time.
You're back in your house, George?
Yes. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.